2022 Business Meeting of the Wall Township Board of Education. Please stand for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smythe, could we have the sunshine statement and roll call, please?
Yes, this is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which I would notice under the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by notice to the CoStar, Asbury Park Press, Township Clerk's Office, all Wall Township public schools, and the Board Administration Office on January 6, 2022. Take a roll call, Mr. Buffa. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Hodnett. Mr. Maliff.
Here.
Mr. Nasser.
Here.
Mr. Sam Flippo. Ms. Stites. Mr. Wondrack.
Here.
Ms. Stites.
Here.
Mr. Adenizio.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion to go into executive session for letters A, D, G, and H on the agenda?
I'll wait for that one.
Motion, Mr. Wondrack, second.
I'll second.
Nazer. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, okay, we will be back at approximately 7:30 PM. Good evening, I'd like to reconvene the Tuesday, July 19, 2022, Wall Township Board of Education, regular meeting. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Buffa. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Hodnett. Mr. Maliff.
Here.
Mr. Nasser.
Here.
Mr. Sam Flippo.
Here.
Ms. Stites.
Here.
Mr. Wondrack.
Here.
Mr. Adenizio.
Here. Thank you. All right. Since we are in July, we do not have any student rep report or special presentations. It's been a quiet month, so I don't have a report. So, Dr. Handerhand, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Adenizio. I hope everyone is enjoying all that summer at the Jersey Shore has to offer. I am, just want to take a minute to say how happy I was and that Wall Township was able to have the Wall Fair again. It's really, it was my first witness to the fair due to COVID, and it was so impressed, it's such an impressive undertaking to plan such a big event, and I'm so grateful so many of the Wall families, so many Wall families were able to attend. So I thank you for the township leaders and employees for all their hard work in planning that. This summer also marks the second year of several grant-funded summer programs for students across the pre-K-12 continuum. It is so great to see so many students in the schools in July. They used to be so lonely, now not so much, so it's really exciting. Some examples of some of the summer activities for elementary students include hands-on projects involving mystery science, not exactly sure what mystery science entails, so we'll have to find out at the August meeting when we get an update. Coding, stop animation, roller coaster challenge, arcade mania, and invention convention. Can't wait to see some of the products. Secondary students, you know, they are receiving targeted instruction on specific areas and specific standards identified by I Ready, and the standards I'm referring to are the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Standards, and in mathematics and English Language Arts. And we are also gearing up for the All Wall Theater Program that's going to be taking place in the near future. And as I mentioned just before, we're going to be sharing some of the highlights with the public at our August meeting where we can see some of, you know, some of the specific highlights from our summer program, so I really look forward to that. I would like to remind all Wall families that federally funded lunch program for all students will not take place this upcoming school year. You may recall that for the last two years, all students, regardless of income, were able to have lunch at no cost. To date, this program has not been renewed. That said, if you or someone you know meets the qualifications for free or reduced lunch, please complete the paperwork so the lunch program can continue for those that need it. If you are not sure if you qualify, please just fill out the form. The new forms will be available through the Genesis Portal, the district website, and in the school offices the second week of August. I would like to add that some federal funding is tied to the free and reduced lunch data. It is critical that all families that qualify complete the paperwork. During the last two years, less families completed the paperwork because all students were eligible for free lunch, and it didn't have the, you know, there wasn't an immediate need to fill out the paperwork. And because of this, our Title I federal funding is less this year. But more importantly, students need to receive the proper nourishment. So please share, I ask that you please share this information, you know, with friends, with family, to make sure that our kids can benefit from our lunch program. I would also like to share that to date, we have still not received the Institutional Abuse Investigation Unit, the IAIU's, report regarding the hazing matter. I would like to mention that decision-making is obviously going to be impacted by this pending investigation, and at this point, we're still in the same position as we were, so I just wanted to give an update to, you know, provide some information to the public that we are still awaiting a report from state agency. That said, this summer, so much planning has been taking place to make the '22-'23 school year a positive one. There are new faces across the district in several positions. I wish to welcome our new Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Jennifer McCann, to her first official Wall School Board of Education meeting. Welcome, Ms. McCann. I know she's been dutifully reporting to our BOE meetings in the public, so I thank you for your attendance back then, and thank you for joining us. And I would also like to welcome Mr. Michael Scorano. Mr. Scorano is on tonight's agenda for approval as the new Director of Human Resources, and I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Scorano, so welcome to Wall Township. And as many of you are aware, the district is in the process of developing a strategic plan. One of the first crucial steps is to conduct a community survey. Thank you to those that completed the survey already. I wish to announce that the survey deadline has been extended to Monday, July 25. It is imperative that we hear from as many members of the community as possible. The survey can be found on the homepage of the district's website. Please encourage anyone in the Wall Township community to complete the survey. It is not limited to school community members, families, Wall, anyone with a connection to the Wall Township community. So please encourage your friends, your neighbors, it's open to employees, it's open to students, so please, we want to get as much honest feedback as possible, and I would like to stress that it is an anonymous, it's through an anonymous third party. So we did that deliberately so you can, you know, provide us with the honest feedback that we're looking for. I hope everyone is having a happy and healthy summer, and I look forward to the weeks to come and for all the good things that we can report out on about the summer at the August business meeting. Thank you. Mr. Adenizio.
Thank you, Dr. Handerhand. All right, moving on, Board of Education updates, I do not have any. Any board members have anything? Nope, seeing none. Committee reports have been posted online for everybody to view, and we will now open up public comment on agenda action items only, so those are the things we will be voting on this evening. So please come up to the microphone.
Hello, is it on? Betsy Cross on the Wall Township. Welcome, Ms. McCann and Mr. Scorano. Let's see, got a couple things. You mentioned Ms. Hodnett is not here, and Mr. Buffa is not here, but you didn't say if they have excused absence, it would be nice to know if it's excused, or they just are just not here tonight, because it's nice out. So, Mr. Adenizio. I guess you don't know, okay. Let's see. Glad to hear an anonymous third party is doing those surveys, and I'm hoping that if you can answer tonight, if people put comments in them, they're going to be printed off, so everybody can see them. Is that a yes? I see you shaking your head, Ms. Handerhand. Just want to be sure that's what's happening. What else? Hazing matter, that is the first time I've heard of that, IAIU, on the hazing matter. Like, how come we're just finding that about that now, that we're waiting for the report? So if you could give us an update, or maybe the attorney, Athena Cornell, I mean, we should have an update on that, I'm shocked to hear that tonight. Mr. Nasser is here, okay. Mr. Nasser, there was a couple things on your FNF, that there were some shortages, the door projects at Allenwood and WIS, are they going to be done in time for the school opening? South Gym, that's the one that the Mercury was in it, that Mr. Smythe bought when Mr. Hable was here, which didn't make any sense, the vendor had IRS problems. When you look at that, you just can't even believe we bought the floor from them. And now we're on the hook for how much, Mr. Smythe? $800,000, because you bought a floor at Mercury? And you've never answered any questions on it. So maybe the $800,000 should come out of your pocket and not the taxpayers, because the floor never should have been purchased, Mercury wasn't even in floors of the year you bought it. I see legal fees, you gave an update of $186,408, Mr. Nasser. Last year, they were $238, and that was pretty much from that horrible report that Anthony Scorillo did on the trailers. A lot of that was from that, and it was a report that Mr. Scorillo did not sign, did not put on his business letterhead, and he is now retired. So there's certainly a reason that he didn't sign it and date it, or he didn't sign it, date it, or put it on your letterhead, and your firm name isn't anywhere in it, so the report means nothing. So, all kinds of problems with that purchase, again, with Mr. Smythe and Mr. Hable who went to jail. Mr. Nasser, I was kind of surprised, that meeting was pretty long, it was like three hours, you didn't even have a page of notes, and not even a mention of the referendum amount. So that was pretty shocking. I did get, finally, Mr. Smythe's contract costs, and they were $322,000. Last time I checked, he was the second highest-paid business director in Monmouth County in terms of contract costs.
Ms. Cross, that's not an action item for this evening.
Oh yeah, you're right, yeah. What else? Hires, oh, resignations. I see some resignations on there, Jason Baring is resigning. Christine Keen is leaving in HR, so now we have nobody in HR that ever did anything. So that person's leaving, and she can have any time whatsoever with Mr. Scorano from the Bay Shore Middle School. If you could go over, I'd love to hear how many people you interviewed for that position, and what his qualifications were, and why you picked him. So I think everybody would love to hear that on the recording, because, I don't know, I thought we'd hire somebody that was, had HR experience, so maybe I missed that. So if you could tell us what HR experience he has, that would be great. And where's his contract? His contract is not attached, and what we don't want to see is what happened with the last guy, he could work for 30 days, put in his paperwork, and cash out 24 vacation days like the last guy did. So we need a contract that we can see before you vote on anything tonight, because otherwise that wouldn't make any sense whatsoever.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, your time is up.
Okay, if you can answer all those questions, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment on action items only? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Dr. Handerhand.
Yes, I just want to comment on the strategic planning survey results. They are being gathered by a third party, they are being gathered by our consultant that was hired, and we will be furnished with a report from Dr. Purnell, so I just wanted to give you some clarity on that. Also, the Institutional Abuse Investigation Unit, the IAIU, but we, in past meetings, have referenced that we were, that we were awaiting a report, that, and if you will recall from past meetings, we reached out to state agencies, law enforcement, including the Institutional Abuse Investigative Unit. We actually contacted themselves to launch an investigation. So this was discussed in the past, and I do want to point out that we are the ones that did make the initial reach out to them so that they can come in and, you know, conduct an independent investigation. I also would like to discuss, for those of you that may not be aware, that there was the detection of mercury in one of the gyms, the poured floor, the South Gym at the high school, and the, there was a slight, a slight detection of mercury. We obviously did not seek a floor with mercury. We, since, since we received that information, we have enlisted the assistance of industrial hygienist, Dr. Richard Lynch, and he has been doing periodic, periodic testing on the gym, and the levels are with, certainly within range that are acceptable, and these reports are located on our website, so, under Facilities Updates. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Additionally, we are just wrapping up, if we haven't already wrapped up, the installation of air conditioning in the South Gym, which is a recommendation from the industrial hygienist, Dr. Richard Lynch, in response to the detection of mercury in the gym floor. So I just wanted to provide some context for some of the public comment that came out this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Handerhand. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to respond to a couple of questions that Ms. Cross asked regarding the shortages, we were talking about material shortages, obviously, the supply chains are still kind of screwed up out there, especially for doors right now, commercial doors, storefronts, aluminum glass, the FRP that actually makes up the door, has been taking some time to get in. Usual lead times were, you know, pre-COVID, around eight to 10 weeks, now we're looking anywhere from 16 to 20 weeks in some cases. You know, we're not unique in that situation, a lot of districts are facing the same thing. Whether it's here before the start of school, you know, obviously, we're hoping that it is, but I can't guarantee that, I'm not in a position to, really, it's up to where we fall in their production schedule. Ms. Handerhand spoke about the South Gym HVAC installation, they're ready to start it up, so that's going to be ready for the start of school. That gym is also uses as a cafeteria, if I'm not mistaken, so there will be, you know, obviously, that's a highly densely populated space, so I think the students and staff are going to get a lot of benefit out of that, as well as it being good for the indoor air quality in that space. Legal fees, we are at $186,408.2. I did not write this in the report, but I will add, over $47,000 of that is in Oprah requests, so that makes up a significant amount of the $186,408 that we have spent this year. Referendum amount in our FNF meeting was not discussed. What we did discuss at length was construction of how the bonds are going to be out there. Obviously, and anybody that's been paying attention in town recently sees that there are some building possibilities out there that may affect what we do in the future and what our needs are, so we need to make sure that whatever we put out there is going to be the best option forward for the district going into the future. So that, in addition to the interest rate changes going up, it does affect our conversation and our path forward, so that's why we're talking about an amount, and I wrote down something about Brian's contract, but I don't remember what it was for. I'll let our attorney handle that one.
Thank you.
Just one comment with respect to the trailer report, as the public knows, that was a very in-depth investigation, which included countless document reviews, interviews of over 40-plus people. The report itself is 27 pages that are single-spaced and was presented at length at a public meeting. So those are the actual facts relative to the report.
Please do not yell out, please do not yell out, please do not yell out.
Please do not disrupt. You are permitted to speak without interruption, please allow others the same courtesy. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Could I have a motion to approve executive minutes, session minutes of June 14, 2022, the business meeting of June 14, 2022, and the special meeting minutes of June 21, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, could I have a second? Second. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
I'm going to abstain on A and B, yes on C and D.
Mr. Sam Flippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. All right. As for a motion, oh, I'm sorry, a motion for approval of the first policy readings of 5512, 7410, Regulation 7410.01, Policy 8420, Policy 9320, and Regulation 9320. Could I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Wondrack. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, I will open it up for public hearing on these policies and regulations. Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. This time for number 12, I will ask for a motion for the consent agenda, which is encompassing number 13 through 15. And Mr. Smythe, did you want to?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I'd like to add to the business office agenda, item 15, letter N, and the resolution would read, "Approve Change Order Number One to the Contract for the Building Envelope Upgrades at West Belmar Elementary School with Spartan Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $12,825 for resurfacing the east and north gym walls with stucco. The total cost of the work is not to exceed $27,825, of which $15,000 will be funded by partial use of the project allowance, and the balance of $12,825 will be funded from Change Order Number One."
Thank you. And just to clarify, when you say gym walls, it's the exterior gym walls, not interior?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Get the motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second? Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Flippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Maliff?
Yes, with the following extensions in the Human Resources Report, number 14, number 22N, letter N, number 22, letter double I. Yes on the rest.
And Mr. Adenizio?
Yes, but I will abstain from number 13E.
Noted.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up for public comment on any district-related issues, please come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Sally Balione, I have two children going into the intermediate school. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the principal assignments, and Dr. Handerhand was good enough to take on the role of the high school principal. I'm just wondering what the plan is for that. I've been in many positions where I was the number one and had to do the number two's job, and it's hard to do two jobs well, especially jobs of that magnitude, so are we recruiting? Are we looking to find somebody for this school year, maybe next school year, my son will be, he's going to be an eighth grader, so then he will be in the high school, so that's a bit of a concern. And not so important, but very important to the eighth graders, I had brought up that there was a lot of talk about the fact that there might not be a class trip. And this is a class that in fifth grade lost a lot of special things that normally happen in this district in fifth grade because of COVID, and sixth grade was a downer because of COVID. Last year, they started to recover, so they're really hoping that if there's a time when that would be discussed, I can bring an army of people here who will help support the idea and the event, if that's what's needed to get it, you know, to get it done. So, those are my two things. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Parn Amos, and I reside at Foxfield Circle in Wall. So there are two things I just want to address real quickly today. First, as a member of Central Elementary School's CAPE Board, we are aware that there were some Facebook posts circulating and talk of our organization supporting certain political agendas, and I just wanted to clear the air and state that CAPE is no way affiliated with any political party or township agenda, and I wanted to let you know that we're just basically a nonprofit organization, and I know you guys know that, I'm kind of telling the public this, that we were just simply here to support our students. We sponsor field trips, character ed, and curriculum-based programs, T-shirts, events, and we just want to build wonderful memories for our children and our school community, and that's it, as simple as that, nothing more. Now, at this time, though, I do want to remove myself from talking on the behalf of CAPE. This next section comes purely from me, as a parent of three children that attended and are still attending Central Elementary. I stand before you now representing myself and a certain group of parents, teachers, students of Central Elementary School, and even two supervisors in the district that have reached out to me. We simply want to express that we are devastated, shocked, and dismayed that Mrs. Jill Antonello will no longer be our principal after a tenure of seven years. I have had a child in that building for the past seven years, and I can personally attest to the fact that her leadership style should be commended. When she arrived at Central School, she laid a groundwork for a culture of respect that currently exists throughout the building. Teachers have told me that she consistently supports them in and out of the classroom. Our school has been running smoothly, and that's because of Mrs. Antonello's strong leadership. Many parents have also reached out to me since you were announced that she was moving to Old Mill School, and they wanted me to ask why we must have that interim principal, why... why are you interrupting two school communities rather than placing the interim into Old Mill when that position became available? Ever since November, our district has been in a state of disrepute due to misconduct of both staff and students and in what feels like complete disarray. If you're trying to shake things up by trying something new, I get it. If you're thinking, why not move these few principals around and try something different, let's just see if it works, then I think I understand. I realize there's a lot of chess pieces involved here, and there's probably a bigger picture here and a strategy that we don't know about. If this decision of moving here had to be made, I want to express that we wish that it could have been made earlier to allow a proper send-off. Parents do feel that after two emotionally challenging years, you've denied their children closure as they are unable to say goodbye and thank you to their beloved principal. A good leader cannot make everyone happy. You guys know that. A few parents have come to me citing examples of when they did not agree with some decisions that Mrs. Antonello made, but these same parents have said that even though they disagreed with her, they were able to understand the reasons behind her decision. Mrs. Antonello was not one to make rash and emotional decisions, rather she made decisions that are best for the entire school and the children and the community. Perhaps if we knew your reasoning behind your decision to move her, we would also be understanding. Fair is another word that comes to mind when we think about her leadership style. She's been perceived by some as tough, but it's because she's fair in all situations. She might also be considered tough because she consistently raises the bar academically for all. She makes sure that each classroom has effective instruction for each and every student, and that's what a good school leader does when they put their students first. She was also a great deal of fun. She had a positive impact on our children. She always dressed up to show her school spirit, whether it was a Little Night costume at events, a snowman on a snowy winter's day. She got soaked at the drunk dunk trunk at at our school picnics, and she even allowed students to duct tape her to a wall for a fundraiser. I have never seen any other administrator go through such spirited lengths for her students. Our students will truly miss her. Since this decision has been made, and there is likely no recourse, I would now like to speak to the parents of the children at Old Mill. So there's a lot of negativity in our culture today, especially in this township, and you may hear negative things from other parents and other teachers that have completely opposing viewpoints to the one that I am presenting today, but I and the group of people that I'm speaking on behalf of believe that you should know that you and your children are in the best of hands. Jill Antonello put her heart and soul into our school. She brought us through this pandemic. She always gave her best for the kids. You are getting one phenomenal educational leader who will care about each and every student that walks through the door. The bar will be set high, as will the standards, but Mrs. Antonello will ensure that each student has what they need to meet and exceed that high bar. I have no doubt that she will care for and guide your bulldogs with a firm but kind hand as she did our Little Nights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Herbert, it is now July twentieth, the third week of August. I see no construction at all going on in the special services building that I was promised was going to start in the spring. It is now midsummer. When are we going to get this building repaired?
Thank you.
My name is Nick Zupko. I reside on Ramshorn Drive. Last August, me and my family moved to Wall Township. Part of our, the purchase of our home had a lot to do with the school district, specifically Allenwood Elementary School, where our children should be attending school. So on January twentieth of two thousand twenty-two, at ten twelve AM, my wife made a call to the Allenwood School requesting information about registration. She was informed that she didn't have to worry that students register up until August. My wife, being a teacher and at the time finishing up her master's degree, assumed that there was no real issues here, so she waited till she was done and registered our daughter. I believe the effective date was January thirteenth. Later in the month, a couple of weeks ago, we received a letter saying that our daughter would not be going to Allenwood, that she'd be going to Old Mill. Reasons being of too many students, too many kindergarteners at Allenwood. I was told there's currently sixty-four students enrolled in the kindergarten at Allenwood School, making it three classes of twenty-one, which by rules and regulations or your policies that you have on the website, the preferred maximum. Preferred being, you know, clearly even on the link that Ms. Handerhand emailed to my wife is showing that it's flexible, it can be changed. She was also nice enough to inform us that it's, she had to send out a handful of these letters stating that children would have to be redistricted to other elementary schools, as well as that three have already been redistricted back to Allenwood. So my question is, you know, how how many students are now left that are no longer going to be Allenwood that can't be filled in in these next, in these three classes that are currently there? And and why is it that we're stuck at a twenty-one student maximum for a kindergarten class? First grade's twenty-two per class. If, you know, we're looking at estimates here, you know, we were told a handful were sent to other schools, and three have already been redistricted back. How many are left? We can't fill those three students or however many students left into these three classes? It's it's kindergarten. That being said, my second issue is, on the website, as far as registration goes, it doesn't explain anywhere that we have a, what was, what we were referred to as a rolling basis for registration. Doesn't say that anywhere. You can dig through policies and find that. However, on the open, if you click the first link to registration, it refers to nothing about students possibly being sent to another school. This is extremely upsetting for me and my family, specifically our daughter, who at four years old, unfortunately, me being dad, has driven by her school multiple times because she's very excited to go to the big kid's school, and explained to her that she is going to be an Allenwood Green Dragon, and she's very excited to be so, and I'm not really sure yet how I'm explaining to her that she will no longer be going to the school where all her new friends from the neighborhood will be going. And I, at this point, I'm really not sure how this is acceptable, and we also have no information on where we are on this list of students that could be brought back. None of this has been made public to us. We have no, no idea where we stand. Are we the next student to be brought back? We don't know. All this information, I believe, should be public, that everybody should know about, especially the fact that it's rolling, a rolling basis for registration, which I've never heard of. I would say that's more first come, first served. I think most of, majority of the community would understand that a lot better than a rolling basis. And again, it's not listed there on the website. You can dig through policy after policy to find it at some point, if you know that that's what you're looking for, but it's not there. This is not a new issue, to my understanding, that this has happened multiple times in the past, and the fact that this hasn't been brought out to everybody is is pretty unacceptable. This being my first experience with the school district and the school board, I'm I'm rather saddened because everything else with the community has been nothing but excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Galvin, Wall Township. I am also a new resident in town, and I have spoken previously about my shock and concern over the full registration registration at Allenwood Elementary after my child was denied enrollment there. I have inquired how long this issue has existed, but my inquiries have been ignored. I've questioned what short-term and long-term solutions are in place to remedy this issue, but I have received no answers. My requests for phone conversations and in-person meetings with the superintendent have all been denied. Instead, I've been met with dismissiveness, dishonesty, and disregard. I've been made to feel that I should just be grateful that my child will be bused to another school within this district, as if no other aspects of this situation matter. Reading and writing are only part of a young child's educational experience. Close proximity to home creates a greater sense of safety. It allows children to build relationships with other children and families that live right around their own house, and it allows for more time to be involved with other activities that encourage physical fitness, social interactions, religious connections, and creativity. As the people in charge of overseeing our children's educational experience, you should also be just as concerned with their physical, social, and emotional health. The ability to waive the preferred maximums of class sizes lies on the shoulders of the superintendent, and it is both shocking and disheartening that the request to go above these maximums has been so quickly and callously dismissed when there is an opportunity for these few students on the waitlist to be welcomed at their neighborhood school. With the preferred max set at twenty-one students and New Jersey law set at twenty-five students, this is the very instance where your Board of Education policy to have the superintendent waive the preferred maximums should be put into play. So why hasn't it? I don't deny that all of you hold difficult positions, and there will always be instances where you just can't please everyone, but as board members, you take an oath to protect the educational welfare of all students and to seek and develop schools that meet the individual needs of all of these children. If you plan to stand behind your board policy of preferred maximums, you cannot continue to ignore the growing population and the need for a solid plan to accommodate these new children and all children within their geographical area. Research shows that lower class size has little to no effect on students in non-abbate school districts unless the class size is below fifteen students per class. With classes already above that, adding one more student to each classroom stands to make zero difference to the class, but would make a big impact on the students allowed to remain in their own neighborhood. If the budget for upcoming school years is going to be set and voted on in March, then you need to take into account the growing population to equip each school with the teachers needed for the amount of students that will be enrolled, or be prepared to waive maximums when your projections for incoming student enrollment fall short. And what about the children that are held back from going to first grade? Should new incoming kindergartners be pushed aside because some kids aren't ready to move on? No, all of these kids need to have their needs met. This cannot just be about numbers. The administrators that handle registration have said this could have been avoided if I registered sooner, which obviously wasn't possible because I wasn't living here yet. But even if I had enrolled on day one, there are still over sixty-three kindergartners in the Allenwood area, so some kids would still have to be left out, if not my kid, someone else's. So the vice given to me for my subsequent children entering the school system is to just register them on the first day that registration opens. So instead of finding a solution for this growing problem, you are instead encouraging us to fight harder against the other parents in our neighborhood, to ensure that our child gets enrolled over their child. This is not a solution. This is not looking out for the best interest of the students. Right now, I should be reading a story to my three girls and tucking them into bed. Instead, I'm here fighting for their right to attend their own school. No parent should have to spend this much time fighting to get their child educated at their neighborhood school. No family should have to suffer negative effects due to the administration not addressing an enrollment issue. Inaction is indeed inaction. It's the action that shows you don't care to make change. You're not interested in progress, and quite frankly, it's the action that shows you don't truly care about the needs of our kids. You need to uphold your oath to protect the educational welfare of these students. I challenge you to find long-term solution for this enrollment issue. I challenge you to consider these children and make changes right now. It's time to take real action. It's time to do better.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
Cheryl Zupko, Wall Township. Denial, anger, bargaining, depression, acceptance. You may be wondering why this woman tonight is standing in front of you rattling off the five stages of grief. On July seventh, two thousand twenty-two, what should have been a joyful moment to finally open the email welcoming my oldest child as a new kindergarten student to Wall Township Schools was momentarily shattered by news that due to over enrollment in the kindergarten classes at Allenwood Elementary School, my daughter would be enrolled in another school along with several other children. Denial, there had to be a mistake. I only live one and a half miles away from Allenwood. When I called the school back in January asking about registration, I was told that they enroll students as late as August, and I need not worry. I thought I had done my due diligence and registered before the end of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I double-checked the registration page. Nowhere on the district website did it mention that enrollment in your neighborhood school was not guaranteed. That night, as my mind raced a hundred miles a minute in a thousand different directions, my husband said not to worry. It had to be a mistake. Anger, after calling Allenwood School the next day, the secretary told me that most parents in the community who've been here a while know that this can happen, so they register as soon as possible in order to get their seat. I want to know why this secret wasn't shared with me when I called the same number in January, a month before registration opened. Bargaining, if only I had talked to someone else that day when I called the school, if only I had registered sooner. Why? How? Depression, walking around my house for days in a fog anxious, how can the district isolate my daughter from her neighborhood peers? How can only several children be excluded from their neighborhood school? For fifteen years, I have dedicated myself to children as a public school teacher. How can it be that my own family has had our neighborhood public schools shut their door in our faces? My daughters' questions, I'm not going to be a dragon mommy, I'm not going to Allenwood, is because they don't think I'm smart enough? The question a child asks because they're too smart and they overheard your tense whispered conversations with your spouse and are attuned to your emotions? Acceptance, how can you accept the unacceptable? Dr. Handerhand, you did take the time to offer me your condolences via email, along with a link to the district regulation guidelines sent to me on class size. If only this information was made available on the registration website, then I wouldn't be here tonight. But I'm here with others and for others who may find themselves in our shoes one day in the not-so-far future. I could not accept my child to pay for the lack of clear communication that should be provided by professionals who are supposed to work hard to support her best interests. Perhaps in the day-to-day job, it's too easy to forget that education is more than a business and that the product we invest in is more than a commodity to be shipped out due to The product of our schools is our children, and as a parent, I sincerely plead that you consider the circumstances that have led me here to speak you to speak to you tonight. As an English teacher, my favorite book to read with students is To Kill a Mockingbird by Harper Lee. A father named Atticus Finch tries to beat down discrimination in his own town by teaching his young children to try and put themselves in other shoes. Imagine for a moment it's your child at the bus stop, waiting to be picked up for school at the neighborhood bus stop, only to see their friends get on another bus as you stand by and watch. Think about the exclusion that that child feels and the disappointment of not being able to attend school with their neighborhood peers and possibly their own siblings. Acceptance? No, I cannot accept this for my child. The district regulations twenty-three, twelve for class size, Dr. Handerhand shared me by email to justify your placement of my daughter outside of her neighborhood school called for flexibility. To quote, "These guidelines are intended to be flexible." Underneath those regulations are also corrective measures designed and regulated to guide you should you have a situation such as this. Dr. Handerhand, at last month's meeting, you boasted several times about how you take great pride in the inclusivity of the Wall Township School District. Members of the board and Dr. Handerhand, I ask that you put yourself in a five-year-old child's shoes for just a minute and think about how you would feel to see the rest of the neighborhood kids board their bus to go to school, the same school has told you, sorry, seats taken, no room left for you. I ask you this in the best interest of my child as a new stakeholder here in the Wall Township School District. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall. And I'm glad you didn't cut those people off. They went over the five minutes, and you should have allowed it, but it's only me that you don't allow the five minutes for. And that's obvious. It's on the clock, it's videotaped.
You get your five minutes.
You do it all the time, Ralph. No, you cut me off before.
You get your five minutes.
Right, and everybody else gets more, and that's discrimination, Ralph, because you do whatever you want and get away with it, and people are sick and tired of it. Okay, listening to these people back here, I went back and looked on the audit reports, and I'm going to give them the pages where they can look this up. Allenwood School has the capacity for 521 in the building. As of June of 2022, there were 410 people in there. As in 2004, they had 488 in there. So maybe you just need to add another kindergarten class, because if you were able to fit 488 in there in 2004, how can we not fit another 70 students? Did we add 70 staff? Something's not right. So dismissive, dishonesty, we hear it all the time. And Tracy Handerhan, you get it, and Ralph, you get it, and the attorney gets it, Athena Cornell, Dennis McKeever, Anthony Scorillo, and Brian Smythe. You people up here are not working for the students, you're not working for the parents, and you're not working for the residents of Wall. So Ms. McCann, I hope you are ready to do some work around here.
Please address your comments to the chair.
You are really going to have to pull some weight here. That is a disgrace to have these people come up one after another. So they should post that on Facebook, because nothing gets done in this town unless it's posted on Facebook. Dismissive, dishonesty, I missed the third D, but it was a good one against you, Tracy. Start returning your phone calls, start returning your emails.
Please direct your comments to the chair, Ms. Cross.
Or Ralph Adenizio, you need to get rid of her. You cannot start another school year like this. And the business administrator should have been gone 10 years ago. When Hable went to jail, he should have been right there with him. How much is the HVAC going to cost that really should have came out of Mr. Hable and Mr. Smythe's accounts? Because everything I've looked at with that purchase, just like the trailer purchase, made absolutely no sense whatsoever. And Mr. Nassar, what type of a referendum are we talking about? 40 million, 50 million, 60 million, 70 million? It is July 19th. So it is outrageous to think that you're still not telling us a dollar amount, because I don't know what you're going to do. Who the hell would ever approve a referendum, and you can't even tell us?
Please direct your comments to the chair, Ms. Cross.
And Ralph Adenizio can't even tell us what the dollar amount is. It is a joke. If you weren't squandering this money around, and Mr. Nassar, you came up with that amount of $47,000 on Oprah?
Again, comments to the chair, please.
Mr. Adenizio, you tell us how much we're to do with your football hazing scandal and the hidden, everything you've hidden on that. So it was over $6,000, I think $7,000 just to the Star Ledger. And then Brian hid that, and he hid it again, and he sent it back to the attorney. So how dare you? The reason you got $47,000 in Oprah is because Mr. Smythe is up here hiding everything he possibly can.
Ms. Cross, that's not true.
It is true, Ralph.
It's not true.
Open up your eyes.
Eyes are wide open. That is simply not true.
Oh. Is the WTEA contract finished? Can you let us know tonight? There is nothing online. Mr. Smythe's illegal contract from 21-22 is still up online.
Not illegal, it has been addressed multiple times.
It hasn't. You didn't approve it in public. Don't talk on my time, Athena Cornell. It was never approved in public, voted on, and showed in the minutes, and that's what the contract says.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, your time is up.
So you cannot do whatever you want.
Thank you, your time is up.
No.
No, it is.
So what, everybody else?
Thank you. Your time is up. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Read those signs all around town, Ralph, read them.
Okay. Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. And I would just like to address, did this before, as required, Mr. Smythe's contract was approved by the Executive County Superintendent on June 10th, 2021. The Board of Education then approved the contract at its next regularly scheduled meeting on June 15th, 2021. The allegations that Mr. Smythe contracted are illegal are false. Ms. Cross attended the June 15th, 2021 board meeting and provided public comment on Mr. Smythe's contract at that time. Dr. Handerhan.
The contract wasn't-
Dr. Handerhan.
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio.
So just to be clear as well, there is no requirement to post a contract that did not need an amendment. The Board has followed all the procedures. So your comments are false. Thank you. There was no attachment.
Please stop calling out.
Okay, your time is up. Please sit down. Please sit down.
False.
Please sit down.
False. You're false, Mr. Beal.
Stop disrupting the meeting, Ms. Cross. Again, everyone else has seemed to abide by the protocol of the meeting with the exception of you.
You're not lying, and I won't have to say false.
Stop making falsehoods, and we won't have to address them. Thank you.
Dr. Handerhan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Adenizio. Firstly, I would like to thank the Central School parent for speaking so eloquently about Ms. Antonello's principalship at Central, and I would like to thank her for that. It is wonderful to hear such wonderful words when someone works so hard. So I'm really so happy that her efforts were recognized. That said, personnel matters certainly can't be discussed with the public, but I do want to thank you again for saying such wonderful things. With respect to Allenwood Kindergarten, Allenwood Kindergarten, the enrollment is high. I want to thank the public that mentioned the website, and that will certainly be looked into, so I very much appreciate that comment. There was a comment that was mentioned, and I just want to say that no one in January was turned away at Allenwood. We have been able to accommodate everyone at Allenwood Kindergarten that has registered through May, so we are hoping that we will be able to find seats in Allenwood Kindergarten for the June registrations. It is, I would like to say that it is not, it is not an easy letter to send. Unfortunately, I have had to send these letters in the past for, and I can speak specifically, students that were initially scheduled to attend Central, and because of social distancing, they had moved in and registered, that needed to be relocated within the district. It is never, enrollments are monitored very closely. It is not an easy thing to do is to reassign a student to another elementary school. We make every, we are working very hard behind the scenes to make room at Allenwood, and just know that your words do not fall on deaf ears. I'm a mom, I would not want to have that conversation with a five-year-old. So I certainly, these are not falling on deaf ears. It's something that we are looking to accommodate, but I do, I would be remiss if I did not point out that there are preferred minimums in our administrative regulations for a reason, and that is, we have kindergarten across the district, and it is, you know, it's, you have to monitor because the number of teachers to students, they're, we want the best educational experience for all of the kindergartners in the district. So every, every, you know, solution is being looked into, and it is something that is being worked on daily, both by Allenwood staff and certainly the Central Board Office. So I just wanted to address that. As far as waiting list, as the gentleman said earlier, we have been able to bring three students back, and our goal is to bring all of our students back. But know that it's not as simple as hiring another teacher to teach kindergarten in Allenwood. Allenwood, the classrooms, some are very different sizes, and the standards of the past in 2004, you know, it's, the buildings are used in different, are used in different ways. So you have to take into consideration every single classroom, and just know that I'm hoping that we are able to bring back all of the would-be Allenwood kindergartners. Another item that I would like to address is the class trips. As you know, Mr. Lachlan just started his principalship at the intermediate school. My hope is to let him get his feet acclimated a little bit, but we will, it's something that has not been, has not been crossed off. We haven't discussed it yet. So as soon as we're able to, as we get the opening procedures all underway and establish all of the protocols that we do with the new teaming schedule and staff assignments, classrooms, we will absolutely be revisiting the spring eighth-grade trip. And I also would like to address the situation of me serving as acting high school principal as well. The days admittedly are pretty long, so, but I will say, if you are not aware, I have a great deal of experience as a high school principal because I was one for 13 years. So it's, it's a role that I'm very familiar with. So there's a lot of muscle memory that's coming back since my two years as being, as being out of the high school principalship. There is a lot of hard work going on with the, with the staff, with the administrators at the high school, a lot of support that I receive. I'm working right now on, and hoping to unveil shortly, a better email management system because as, there's emails that would come in when you're the superintendent, and there's the email that would come in as acting principal, and it's not feasible to come into the same email address. And some things, there's a whole lot of emails that really, you know, should be redirected to other offices. So that type of communication system I'm working on right now so that I can be as attentive as possible to the needs of the students. I very much look forward to working with the students again. However, you know, when you're the superintendent, certainly a superintendent during a pandemic, there's not a lot of FaceTime with the students. So it is something that I'm very much looking forward to. With respect to timeframe, I don't know. I don't know how long I'll be wearing the two hats, but what I will tell you is that I'm incredibly invested in the students and the faculty at Wall High School. So this, and the staff, I'm incredibly invested, and that's something that I bring that perhaps an interim candidate that we may be able to bring in for a spell. You know, I'm invested, I'm here, and I work hard for the students of Wall Township every day. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a tough two hats to wear, but-
When are you going to make a decision by?
Please stop yelling out.
But just know that the acting principal is incredibly invested in the students, and we already have lots of activities planned. We're, there's a whole lot of work going on behind the scenes that I alluded to in the superintendent's report, and I look forward to the best school year in 2022, 23 that I've ever had and that the students have ever had. So that's the hope, and a lot of people are working hard behind the scenes to make that happen. So I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nassar, earlier you gave an answer, and I guess somebody wasn't listening. Could you explain why in the FNF minutes, again, we did not talk costs?
With pleasure, Mr. President. I would like to call attention to the April 29th, 2022 article in the Asbury Park Press entitled, "Wall Schools Move A Step Closer To $40 Million Referendum." So to say that costs have not been discussed, I think is a bit misleading. It is important to note that one of the most important data points that we as the FNF Committee and as a board have to look at, and, excuse me, the administration, is the demographics of the community. And within those demographic reports and our projections, we look at potential communities that may have permits issued to build. When we take a snapshot of the community and that snapshot takes into account half the amount of potential housing going in because a plan may have failed in the public court, and a developer came back and is now planning to put double the amount of housing in, that forces us to go back and take a look to make sure that we are moving forward in the proper manner, and we're going to have enough room for all the students. So this is like trying to hit a moving target. It does change day to day, and we do have to have a cutoff point where we commit to an amount and move forward. In a dynamic situation like this, it makes sense to wait as long as possible so that we can capture as much data within our projections as possible and make the decision with the most updated data that we can get. So if there is, we should have more information coming towards the beginning of the school year around September. That's probably where our cutoff point is going to be, and at that point, that information will be shared with the community and communicated ad nauseam, I'm going to say, because this is something that we want to make sure we discuss as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Halt?
Yeah, I'd just like to touch on the Allenwood situation, because I think there's nobody here that doesn't feel for the situation that these people are in. And I think it would be, you know, easy if it was just a matter of saying, well, there's X number of kids on the list, just kind of add them to what we have already. Sure, we could do that. The issues are unfortunately a little bit more complex because some of the classroom sizes don't allow for, you know, for you to put, you know, more than certain, you know, number of kids in a classroom, especially when you're talking AIDS and so on and so forth. So again, I know people will come up and say, well, just, you know, I know it's preferred, so just add a few more in. It's not that simple. And then you also have the other option, the other problem is, you're, children aren't dispersed around the district evenly in grade levels. So you may have Old Mill that only has 16, you know, that has, you know, two classes of 16, you know, or 17. And then you have Allenwood, you have three of 21 or 22, and Wes Bellmore may have, you know, two classes with, you know, 18. It's not like even all around. So it's hard to justify, in one sense, to have, to the 24 other, or the 23 kids in a class, well, we're going to send your daughter or son to a class that has 24, but the kids on the other side of town are getting an education where they only have 14 or 15 or 16 in a class. So again, like I said, I bring this up not to diminish the issues that these poor people have, because I'm, honestly, I'm upset about it, but I think the community at large needs to understand that we just didn't do these things, or the superintendent just didn't do these things willy-nilly, that there was some thought behind, well, how many can we put into a classroom physically, and how many can we put in there, and how can we justify other schools with, you know, less of enrollment? And then, like I said, well, you know, add another class, well- of enrollment? And then, like I said, well, you know, add another class. Well, it used to be when I went to school, it was like classroom, 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 classroom. Now you have, with the state coming in, all those rooms that used to be classrooms now, and again, Dr. could talk to this, they're not classrooms anymore. This one's an inclusionary thing. This one's got, you know, you got to use it for this thing that the state mandates. So the actual number of rooms and classrooms that are actual classrooms that you thought of as when you went to school, yeah, yeah, we did have 488 kids back then, but we can only functionally fit in 400 now, not because the school got smaller, but because of the way the state mandates that we have to use the space in the school. Wall Township doesn't always decide that. That's, that's decisions that are made. And so, again, while I tend to ramble and I apologize, I just, I just want to explain that if it was a matter of doing what you guys want us to do, we would do that in a second. But I think there's a little bit more involved in that, and I know Tracy's trying to be creative, and we're trying to look at ways, and we're, and we're looking. And the other issue would be, well, what happens if we do accommodate your three children, four children, five children, whatever it is that's on that list, and then everybody's good? And then next week, we get two more kids sign up, and they, well, you did it for them, so put me in. Well, no, ma'am, now you're, you registered in July or August, so that's way beyond. Well, they registered in May or June, so it just, it just get, and you know what? That, that may have been a mistake, Betsy, and you know what? That's something, again, we're not perfect. We're, we'll, we'll look at that and learn from that and know that.
Please stop yelling out.
You know, okay, well, again, I...
Mr. Hall, can I, can I build off of what Mr. Hall was mentioning? Because there's, there were numbers brought up about capacities of the buildings. Those are known as functional capacities. What is really pertinent is the programming capacities, depending on the different programs that are occurring in the schools. To Mr. Hall's point, there's a certain amount of square footage per student that you can put into each classroom. We are bound by those numbers per the state. There's also aids required per a certain amount of students. There's, there's requirements. That being said, I know I, as a facilities professional in schools, have complete faith in Dr. Handerhan to try to come up with a solution before school starts, because again, a lot of this is moving. There's people moving out, there's other people moving in, there's programs that are completely unrelated to this that will affect space in another area. So again, there's a lot of moving parts in this, and, and as the summer progresses, the picture will change. So I would urge patience for everybody as much as possible. We can, we can talk after this, and we can get more information if, if you're all right with that.
Please stop yelling out. Please stop yelling out. Ms. Cross, everybody else? I know you don't care. Please, it's... All right. Mr. Smythe, did you have anything with the special services building repairs? Anything you can kind of give an update on?
We've gone out to bid twice. Both times bids came in, they were well over the budget for the project. We are soliciting quotes, breaking down the scope of work, and we're still in the process of obtaining those quotes for the roofing, for the siding, in, in an effort to accomplish the project. It is noted that this is not an educational building, so as much as we planned or intended to have it done in, well, the spring, however, we did not accept either bid that was accepted or that was received. We're, because it's not a noneducational building, it's not imperative that it's done over the summer, and it's work that can be done in the fall, and we anticipate that perhaps pricing would be better for the district if contractors bid work that would be done in the fall as opposed to everybody that is booked for the summer. So we're still working on it, is the short answer.
Thank you. Any board members have anything addition? Seeing none. Ms. Grant, did you have anything? No? Okay. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone, have a good evening.